We stand, please. Pledge of allegiance to the flag and the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Calling to order, the charter township of Brownstown, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, six P. M. It's a regular meeting. Clerk Brinker, will you call the roll, please?
Supervisor Smith.
Present.
Clerk Brinker here. Treasurer Eberth.
Here.
Trustee Allen.
Here.
Trustee Beres.
Here.
Trustee Chapman.
Here.
Trustee Killian.
Here.
Thank you. I trust that the board has had an opportunity to review the minutes of the regular board meeting of March the fourth, twenty twenty-four. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve, support.
Motion's been made by trustee Eberth, support by, I'm sorry, treasurer Eberth, and support by trustee Killian. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda approval.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Motion's been made by trustee Chapman, is there support?
I'll support that. Through the chair.
Please.
Um, trustee Chapman, would you mind, um, amending, yes, to add item, the item that township manager Peters just passed out to us is going to be E. One, under recreation.
I am perfectly fine with that.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public forum. Those wishing to speak would be allowed at three minutes. Please step to the podium, state your name, and you shall be heard. Hello, sir.
Good evening, my name is Angel Lopez, and I'm coming on behalf of El Gallo Food Truck. Uh, I was just coming because I see that there's a lot of, you know, they're not sure if they want to let us in or not, or let it happen, but, I mean, I see you guys have concerns, but my background, I've been in this industry since I was thirteen years old, I'm forty years old now. I was like, I, I, I've worked in many restaurants, and I've worked in mi pueblo, I've worked in a restaurant you guys may know, uh, Camino Real, Winda. Uh, my father is the owner of that restaurant there, and this is my branch out, you know, I want to start my own business, and I have a good reputation with the community of Winda, and I would like to build it. I'm a resident here in Brownstown, so that's why I wanted my business here. I live in Fo- Fox Creek subdivisions, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm a part of this community, and I want to be here with my business. And that's one of the things, you know, uh, you guys have any questions on my background, I'm more than willing to let you guys in, there's no, I'm open book. You know, I, when I first decided to start off to do this, it's been a long process. Uh, I have my Safe Serve certification, I have my food allergen certifications, I'm cleared with Wayne County for serving food. I mean, I have everything other than you guys' approval, you know what I mean? And I've been waiting a long time, it's almost been a year for this process, and the only thing that's holding up is this now, and like I said, you guys can come anytime you want to check my truck. You know, once we're operating, everything will be top notch, I like to give a good service, and I like to give quality food, and I'm a very neat freak when it comes to those kind of things. So, uh, I think you guys would enjoy my food, and like I said, I would love the opportunity to be in this community, seeing how I live here already, makes it a lot easier to get around, and, you know, I have to go so far, you know? And like I said, I just appreciate you guys' time, and that's all I really needed to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else caring to speak? Seeing none, moving on. Agenda item one, second reading of ordinance one forty-one dash seventy-eight, amendment of ordinance one forty-one dash forty-five, section seventeen point zero seven, A, seventeen point zero seven, B, seventeen point zero seven, C, eighteen point zero seven, A, eighteen point zero seven, B, eighteen point zero seven, C, and twenty-three point four, G, by revising the time requirements included in each section.
Motion to approve, support.
Motion's been made by trustee Allen, and supported by trustee Chapman. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Brinker, would you call the roll, please?
Chapman.
Yes.
Brinker, yes. Allen.
Yes.
Eberth.
Yes.
Beres.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Motion carries. Item two, second reading of ordinance two nine four dash two, in ordinance amending the ordinance number two nine four, part one one zero, sell of tobacco products to minors, providing for repealer, severability, penalties, savings clause, and effective date.
Motion, motion to approve, support.
Motion by treasurer Eberth, support by trustee Chapman. Discussion, please. Hearing none. Clerk Brinker, would you call the roll, please?
Killian.
Yes.
Eberth.
Yes.
Brinker, yes. Allen.
Yes.
Beres.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Item three, peddler permit application, Angel Lopez, tabled from meeting of March the fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Support for discussion.
Support for discussion.
Motion made by clerk Brinker, and support for discussion by trustee Beres.
I see that the police chief has, um, went through this and, I'm going to say, approved it, um, and I believe the fire chief said that he would be expecting it, or, um, would be doing it. Um, can we put a timeframe on that with the fire department so we can not hold this up any longer?
Through the chair, is this a pending, it's, what do we call that, approving pending a fire inspection within?
Yeah.
Can we say, is it permissible, say, within fourteen days of, I know they have to set up, but, you know, we don't want to wait like thirty days or sixty days, is there, are we outside the, our scope if we do anything like that?
I don't know how long it takes the fire.
I don't know.
I think fourteen would be fair, if, I guess, if he doesn't, fourteen and the gentleman opens, and the chief, uh, punts him down and sets his truck.
I'm certain that, uh, I shouldn't say that, I'm certain. I imagine I could call the fire chief tomorrow, he's, he's not able to be here this evening, but, uh, tomorrow, and request that he, uh, expedite the inspection once they're set up, so, um, a specific timeframe, uh, I'm comfortable granting whatever you guys want, but I don't know his actual, uh, timeframe.
I have, I have some questions.
Well, let's just deal with, or, does it concurrent to that, trustee Chapman?
That's fine if it's done, yeah.
Or?
Yeah, something else.
Oh, yeah. Um, this, you actually have a trailer, correct?
Correct.
Because it's not listed on here as trailer.
Uh, I believe we have the picture, if not, I can have the picture.
Anyway, so how big a holding tank do you have on there?
What does that, what do you take for, what?
Your wastewater, gray water?
Uh, forty-five.
So how you plan on emptying that while you're there? You're, you're gonna put the trailer there and just leave it, or?
Well, I'm gonna use it, and I'm gonna take it every night.
You're gonna take it every night home?
Yeah.
Oh, all right, you're gonna have it.
And I go, I go back to the little rail and dump out there.
All right, and you're gonna rock the generator?
Yeah.
Oh, all right, no, and I, I use it at the restaurant, it's good food there.
Oh, yeah, I would, I don't know if you ever hear me, I'm usually more behind the bar.
Thank you.
So, is, is, to the supervisor.
Yes.
Is the motion, uh, approval upon the fire chief's inspection, do we want to end it there, or do we want to say within fourteen days? It's not my motion to make.
I would like to expedite it, but that's just mine.
Well, why don't we say within, that we're, the maker of the motion, the supporter of motion to approve pending a successful completion of fire inspection within fourteen days? Is that what we want to say?
Who made the motion?
I made the motion, but I, I'm, so I'm asking you, you're, you want to, the fourteen days for what, to have them set up in fourteen days?
Set up and inspected by the fire.
Set up and inspected in fourteen days? I suppose maybe we could ask them if they're able to get set up in fourteen days? Is that possible?
I can go tomorrow.
You can have there tonight, right?
Yeah.
Well.
So, we're, we're.
To, to the board, I think that the question is, it's contingent upon approval of a fire inspection rather than a timeframe.
No, I, I want to put a timeframe on the fire department.
Right.
Okay.
So that we're not dragging this out.
Well, I was hoping that we could put some urgency with the fire department to get it done, but I'm fine with that. Okay?
Thank you.
Can I go to fourteen days?
Fine.
Okay, then I will amend it to fourteen days, then, make that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four, peddler permit application, Little Bite Big Taste Food Truck.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made by clerk Brinker.
Uh, second for discussion.
Second for discussion by trustee Chapman.
Um, this supposed site plan is not a, it's not correct, it's not, it's a total, says total station, has not been totaled, and where the food truck is scheduled to be is where the fuel dump is for the tankers. How can you have a food truck where the tankers come in? Plus, on this one, we need a traffic study, you cannot get in and out of that traffic station normally from nine to five, and you put a food truck in there, it's, it's gonna be really fun, and there's really no parking in front of that store, if you pull up there and two or three people park, you can't get in and out of that store, the traffic is terrible. I don't think it, there's room for it there.
Do we?
To the supervisor.
I agree.
What, what, what was your first?
Could just be, on, on the site plan such as it is, it says it's a total station, so it's not a total station, it hasn't been a total station for twenty-plus years.
Yeah.
So whoever looked at this site plan obviously didn't go by, and the fuel dump, where the tankers dump is right on the corner, where, right by where the food truck is, so when the tanker comes in to dump its fuel, it dumps it right there. And there's not much room there, there really isn't, plus, on here, how far do we know that food truck is from that building?
Isn't that why the fire department does an inspection?
But, we should, we should be able to have those numbers on there, but.
I, I'm not disputing that, but.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be part of the?
I'm not sure.
Fire department.
I'm not sure if that's the fire department or the building department to put the numbers on there.
Well, to the chair, I, I think if, if the site, you know, we requested as part of this, the site plan, if it's defective, it's defective. I mean, if it's not answering questions, they need to resubmit it with the proper site plan regardless of what the fire department has to do.
Right, it's, it's, you know, it, it, if they, where the other one is, you, you know, you drive by the titles, you know, you know that that parking lot is huge, here, it's awful tight, and this one, the traffic is very busy, and it's hard to make a right turn out of there even, because the traffic never stops. So I think we need more information on this.
Through the chair, is, is the site plan, is the only thing wrong with the site plan, the name of the gas station?
No, that's, that's really, but, I would need some measure, if, if you're gonna have a food truck set up where a tanker comes in to dump the fuel, there's not much room in there, I, you know, there, and traffic is horrendous at that corner at all hours of the day. I mean, coming in and out of there has got to be horrendous, it's hard to make a right turn out of there.
So I guess, yes, I think these are, uh, items that need to be addressed, and I think we're trying to do that with what we talked about in our, in our last meeting, is, is coming up with a, an ordinance for food trucks, but right now, today, all we have is the transient.
Right.
Uh, ordinance, I mean, you know, that's the only approval that we could, that we could do. I mean, I, I would hate to put businesses, make them wait, make them wait, make them wait, because we don't have an ordinance, so.
Well, this is, you know, the traffic is part of the problem, I mean, and hopefully the food truck does well, but now you got, you're gonna have people coming in here to get their food with a tanker parked there, I'm not sure what the tanker schedule is when he comes in, and trying to make a right turn out of there, you're going to get your, the food, and you try to make a right or left, and if you want to make a left turn out of there, it's impossible to make a left turn.
Well, that, you know, through the chair.
Please.
So, you know, that is, why bother with the site plan if they could, what if they put it right at the pumps? They put a, a thing, and we said, well, they submitted the site plan, it's right at the pumps, right? We would be like, well, you're right next to the pumps, is that safe? I mean, the site plan has to serve some purpose, if it's just they put it wherever they want and submit it, and it's like, well, I mean, that, that's a concern with, what's being said, i- and I, you know, if it was a trivia, if it's only the label of the gas station.
That's, that's immaterial.
I would say, well, okay, they got the wrong.
Yeah, that's not a big deal.
But, I think that is a concern, is in this particular case, is it safe? Right, it's, it's safe for people driving in and out, the drivers of the trucks?
Well, not only that, excuse me, but.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's a flammable, um, substance, gasoline, and they use propane normally to cook flames, and it's, it's just, um, if, if, if a tanker truck was, um, operating.
And it says right on here, you can see where they are, it says fuel, diesel, all that's listed right where.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's not gonna come any room there.
Through the supervisor to our attorney, if we're concerned about the site plan for safety concerns, because it's, you know, it's, it's a plan, but those are legitimate concerns being brought up, is it appropriate for us to, to allow them to address those concerns in a new site plan?
I think it's appropriate for you to maybe ask the building official to take them and look at it, because reports included, talks about pointing from the building, uh, maybe that's not enough, maybe if the fire chief wants to look at the site plan as well as the building official prior to the board passing judgment, I think that's appropriate.
So would it be appropriate to possibly table this, to allow?
For further information.
Allow the building department and even the fire chief a preliminary, just making sure before we put these people through all of this work, and then we say, well, you're in a bad location? Uh, maybe that's the solution.
I just, you know, with, uh, the location is a little.
It is a tight location.
It's very tight.
Through the chair, well, then, then, okay, so, so to be clear, since the owner of the food truck is here in the audience, and he has submitted everything that he needed, when we're asking him to submit more items, what else would he need to submit?
We're, we're not, we're saying, let's have our building department and the fire chief take a preliminary look and make sure that this is sufficient.
Maybe a traffic study.
Uh, I, I wouldn't suggest what has to be done, I'd let them look at it. Because otherwise, what I'm saying is, is they do a site plan, they can put it anywhere in the parking lot, where like, well, they did it, that's true, I mean, it's a legitimate concern, and maybe table it for the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, I'm okay with that.
And, and request them, Mr. Peters, can we request them to take a look at this?
Yes, certainly, I, I think, um, maybe have, is, what we're looking at when you see the, the plan that's submitted, you know, obviously you can't tell those distances, they're not laid out in there, um, but maybe confirmation from the building official and the fire chief that there's no anticipated, uh, issues in the fire code with the location of those tanks, or what would have to be in place for it to comply, and then confirmation that there's room, uh, to meet the setback requirements, I, I think we could certainly request that.
Yeah, and, and it's understand, you know, the, it's this far from the, you know, but what's that mean us, it may be plenty, but I don't blame the people preparing the site plan, but it does raise questions.
And on here it says gravel, so are they gonna add a gravel pad? It's, you know what I mean, are they gonna put the gravel in addition to it?
And also, you may want to consider is, you could conditionally approve based on the approval of the fire chief and the building official, and then you don't slow these people down either, if in fact it's in informants with what needs to be done, there's something to think about.
Who, who's the maker of the motion?
I am. I can, uh, gen, or, I'm sorry, amend my motion to conditionally approve this based on the, uh, building official, uh, Mr. Earl, and, uh, the fire chief, their inspection of setbacks, and relative to the, the underground tanks, et cetera.
I would like to see the board to see all of it done before it's approved.
Who, who seconded the motion?
Dave.
So Dave's not gonna support that amendment to the motion?
No, I, we've done that too much in the past, and it, we're, we're fighting that now constantly because stuff never comes back. We, we need to have everything, all our eyes on it and get these across before we.
Please.
You know, it's, it's unfortunate that we're in this situation again, and a lot of these things that come from our building official, he is aware of them or has questions about them, and it still comes to us as if we're being dumped on to make a decision that he won't make, and it's getting to be frustrating because we see this more and more and more, and now we're blaming somebody else for something that we should be able to do. Our fire chief isn't here, and I'm sure he's gonna do an excellent job at it, however, some of these things could be addressed by the building department prior to coming to us.
Before we see it, it should be clean when he comes to us.
And, and it's, and it's been repetitive.
I concur.
So there's a motion in warrant of support?
I will support the amended motion, I, I would ask that we also, um, within fourteen days, same as before, because that's our next board meeting, um, that the same conditions as the first permit.
So the motion is amended to approve conditionally upon inspection within the fourteen days?
By the fire chief and the building department with appropriate setbacks that meet all, every ordinance and regulation we have, to ensure that we don't have a safety issue.
So it's been made and supported, is there need for additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
The record show two opposed.
Can I get, can I please get a roll call vote for motion purposes for minute taking, please?
Okay.
Allen?
No.
Beres?
Yes.
Eberth?
Yes.
Chapman?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
Brinker, yes. Smith?
Yes. Motion carries. Item five, peddler, peddler permit application, Power Home Remodeling Group. Chairs in want of a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion made by treasurer Eberth, seconded by trustee, uh, Beres. Discussion, yes, sir.
Have we any complaints about this vendor?
Through the chair, yes, we have. Uh, last year, when this was, this vendor, uh, had their peddler per- permit approved by this board, we got numerous, numerous complaints from residents through this, uh, with this, um, peddler. So, um, I don't know if there's anybody in the audience from, uh, Power Home, but, um, we did, the clerk's office received numerous phone calls, uh, complaining, uh, about their employees.
Through the chair, what were the, other than people knocking on the door, what were the complaints, like whether substance?
They were, um, very pushy, they wouldn't take no for an answer, they wouldn't leave, uh, people's residences when asked to do so, there were specific no soliciting, uh, posts in neighborhoods, and they said they didn't have to abide by those, um, so we, we got numerous complaints about this, this business.
I guess, through the chair, I, I, I believe it's no soliciting of public property, they can knock on the door, if it's private property, am I correct on that, if it's a?
Well, it's a form of protest, and it's like, I don't know that people have a roll call, and want to call the police after they're given the, 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 to, uh, put up.
Right. We do so through the board, though, this is again, the hope permitting, if this, if we have this, what are our op- options, if we have a history, other than saying we ignore it and move forward because they checked the box, what are our options to this, uh, to our attorney?
Well, under the ordinance, you have to look at their business and moral appearance, and of course, there's nothing objective in the ordinance that is a guide for this board to approach. Quite frankly, you have to manage, you deny based on the fact of traditionally historically they had employees that wasn't there, um, I think we might be left in solid ground if it goes to.
Uh, through the chair, to our attorney, if we do approve this tonight, and we do continue to get complaints from our residents, can we revoke the peddler's permit?
Much easier to revoke than it is to deny.
Thank you.
Uh, through the chair, I, you know, so we're gonna put it up to a vote, but I would suggest that we reach out, um, just because somebody has a business, they may not know the peddler, the people knocking on the door, I think they came by my house, and I don't recall, quite frankly, any of the peddlers that come by my house, I've never really had an issue, they've been polite, um, but, um, I think it, we should, even though it's not required, reach out to the owner and express that concerns, that there's been complaints and was brought to the board's attention, and it's a concern, if we pass this, that should still be made, that phone call.
They were made aware last year, the owner was, I personally reached out to the owner.
Were they receptive?
They were, but we still continued to get complaints, but there's numerous employees, so, you know, just, just, I just, for the record, I just wanted that to be, we, I did personally reach out to the owner, spoke to him.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, please.
Eberth?
Yes.
Beres?
Yes.
Brinker, no. Killian?
Yes.
Chapman?
No.
Allen?
No.
Smith?
No. Motion does not carry. Department reports. Supervisor, item one, accept employee resignation notice of Patricia Hor- Thornton, post and advertise simultaneously the resulting vacancy.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Motion's been made by. If this, if we have this, what are our op, options? If we have a history, other than saying we ignore it and move forward because they checked the box, what are our options to this, uh, to our attorney?
Well, under the ordinance, you have to look at their business and moral integrity. And of course, there's nothing objective in the ordinance that is a guide for this board to approach. Quite frankly, we have major, we deny based on the fact of traditionally, historically, they have employees that wasn't there. I think we might be left with solid ground if it goes to.
Uh, through the chair, to our attorney, if we do approve this tonight, and we do continue to get complaints from our residents, can we revoke the peddler's permit?
Much easier to revoke than it is to deny.
Thank you.
Uh, through the chair, I, you know, so we're gonna put it up to a vote, but I would suggest that we reach out. Just because somebody has a business, they may not know the peddler, the people knocking on the door. I think they came by my house, and I don't recall, quite frankly, any of the peddlers that come by my house. I've never really had an issue. They've been polite. But, um, I think it, we should, even though it's not required, reach out to the owner and express that concerns that there's been complaints and was brought to the board's attention, and it's a concern. If we pass this, that should still be made, that phone call.
They were made aware last year. The owner was. I personally reached out to the owner.
Were they receptive?
They were, but we still continued to get complaints. But there's numerous employees, so, you know, just, just, I just, for the record, I just wanted that to be. We, I did personally reach out to the owner, spoke to him.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, please.
Eberth?
Yes.
Breeze?
Yes.
Brinker, no. Killian?
Yes.
Chapman?
No.
Allen?
No.
Smith?
No.
Motion does not carry. Department reports. Supervisor, item one. Accept employee resignation notice of Patricia Hor, uh, Thornton. Post and advertise simultaneously the resulting vacancy.
Motion to approve? Discussion?
Motion's been made by trustee Allen. Is there support?
I'll support it.
Support by trustee Breeze.
Through the supervisor.
Uh, trustee Allen had discussion.
Oh, go ahead. I just wanted to say that, uh, we're, I believe we're losing a good employee, and I, hopefully, we can find someone to fill those shoes. She's been here for seven plus years, uh, readily, readily available, knowledgeable, and I hope that we can find somebody that can fill those shoes. She was a plus, if you ask me, when it came to asking for information. If it was healthcare, if it was about your time, uh, and I found that, uh, she was very, very helpful in that, and she's really gonna be missed.
I concur.
To the attorney, if we deny this motion, will she be forced to continue working here?
You can try it.
Thought I'd ask.
Then we'd have big workers come.
Patty's already told me that won't work. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? As evidenced, so ordered. Motion carries. Human Resources, create new full-time position of DPW Assistant Foreman with approved wage scale and post slash advertise simultaneously.
Motion to approve? Support?
Motion's been made by trustee Allen, supported by trustee Chapman. Any discussion here? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, Human Resources, tuition reimbursement for Andrew Starzak, Deputy Police Chief.
Motion to approve?
Support.
Support, but I ain't gonna ask, but I'm gonna say, how much we owe you a dollar?
Motion was made by Clerk Brinker.
No, uh, Chapman.
Chapman. Who was the support?
Me.
Okay, Allen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As evidenced, so ordered. Motion carries. Item four, Police, request to enter into a new, oh, into a two-year contract with Flock Safety for six Flock license plate reader cameras for the cost of $102,000 in 2024 and $81,500 in 2025.
Motion to approve with, uh, one, um, edit on there.
Support.
On your paperwork, your agenda, it says six Flock license plate readers. It's supposed to be 26. The correct, uh, information, the correct number is in your packet, but just on the agenda, there's just a, the two is missing.
Okay. Motion was made by Clerk Brinker, supported by trustee Allen. Any further discussion?
Just so the public knows, Mr. Supervisors, that they're expecting a $37,000 federal grant, uh, toward this, so I think that's a good job.
Any further comments?
I don't know. Through the chair, did the chief, did you want to speak on these, or no?
Well.
You don't have to.
Make them.
We, we certainly, um, have seen the value in this. We've been utilizing the Flock system for some time. We have agreements with other area, southeast Michigan departments, and, uh, we recently solved a, uh, a very serious felony that happened in the township, and, and a lot of that had to do with the Flock camera system. It's state-of-the-art. Um, a lot of the big cases that you've seen happen across the country. When they talk about those investigative, uh, uh, resources that they don't like to really talk about in public, this is what we're talking about. So, uh, we have, uh, Matt from Flock in the audience there, if anybody has any specific, uh, questions, but, um, I wholeheartedly support this. I think, uh, our support services, uh, Detective Bureau, uh, they use it all the time. It's, it's, uh, almost like cellphone technology now. It's a, you know, people come and go, uh, getting to and from the crime scene. So, um, I, I strongly, uh, believe this will really enhance our ability to investigate and, and solve crimes.
Many of us have sat through a presentation that Matt did over at the Fire Department. It was quite impressive. And he vindicated and, and Andy's indicated as well that, um, it's allowed you to coordinate with other police departments in, uh, apprehending, uh, people who have, uh, committed crimes elsewhere.
And we're, just, just to, uh, you know, enhance this, we are still going to be looking for, uh, community business partners that may want to help us add cameras to our system. If you look at that map, you, you'll notice a void along our western border. It's not because we didn't think we needed them there. It's because here on Township, just recently signed on with Flock, and they're gonna be covering that western border very good. So, uh, we're, we're trying to be as efficient as possible, but Brownstown, as you all are aware, is, uh, geographically challenged with our three separate sections. So, you know, we're trying to use, uh, use this so that the entire township is covered. We will be reaching out to business, uh, partners through our DDA, um, to meet with them now that we know that we're, we're moving forward with the program.
Chief and deputy chief, we have some businesses that already have them, don't we?
Um, I, they're, they're talking about it. I don't know where they're at in the contract process.
Does Advantage One have one?
Advantage One, uh, they were talking with us about this in, uh, in the past. Andy, do you know?
I don't believe they have any, but, uh, there's a local apartment complex that is signing on board right now.
Excellent.
Could it hear from Mr. Flock since he's here?
Matt, Matt Flock, would you like?
Not too fast, now. Start at eight.
Yeah, so, uh, good evening, everyone. Happy to answer any questions. Uh, my name is Matt Wayne. I've been with Flock Safety for a little over two years now. I am local to the Downriver area. Was born and raised in Riverview, currently live in Groseal, and helped work with multiple agencies across the state of Michigan in their partnership with Flock. So happy to answer any questions that you might have. Have lots of friends and family that live in Brownstown, do shopping and eating in Brownstown, so happy for a potential partnership.
Could you give us a little background on how it operates?
Yeah, absolutely. So it is a license plate recognition camera. Um, essentially, it is on the side of the roadway. It is gonna be solar powered, so it's infrastructure-free. We don't have to worry about running power to that specific location. In every vehicle that drives by that camera, a still image is taken, just a still image of the vehicle. And then the police department is able to go back and search, let's say there was an incident that happened, and they might be searching for a red Chevy pickup truck. They could go back to a certain camera or a certain intersection, search for a red Chevy pickup truck that was in that area during that time. It narrows down the search quite a bit, and then gives them leads to follow up on and objective evidence, which is photographs of that license plate placing that vehicle in that area during that time.
I remember you were here once before, and I remember some of this, and I do have a little background in this, but.
Yes, sir.
Is that information kept, or is that information, um, released after a period of time, that particular plate or that particular section of the area where it's sitting in?
Absolutely. So all of the data is stored, um, in the cloud for 30 days. It is encrypted end to end. All of the data is owned and operated by the police department here, so they decide which agencies they would like to share with locally, if they would like to share at all. After 30 days, that information is completely deleted from our system. If the police department downloads it to their evidence management system, they could obviously keep it for longer, but it only stays in the system for 30 days.
Thank you.
And just one follow-up. So there, since it's owned and operated by the police department, there's no marketing of data for any reason to third parties?
No, absolutely not.
Any further questions from the board?
Uh, yes, thank you, sir. Big kudos to our chief for the work that he's been doing, bringing our department up to date, accreditations, and all of these things are part of your promise. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt. Motion's been made. Discussion's been had. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to be Clerk. Item one, Budget Amendment, 2024-8.
Motion to approve?
Motion's made by trustee Chapman.
Support.
Support by Brinker? Any discussion, please? Hearing none. Clerk Brinker, will you call the roll?
Breeze?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Brinker, yes. Chapman?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Eberth?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Motion carries. Item two, Budget Amendment, 2024-9.
Motion to approve?
Motion by trustee Chapman.
Support.
Support by trustee Killian. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Brinker, will you call the roll, please?
Chapman?
Yes.
Breeze?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Brinker, yes. Allen?
Yes.
Eberth?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Motion carries. Number three, Budget Amendment, 2024-10.
Motion to approve?
Motion's been made by trustee Chapman. Is there support?
Support.
Support by trustee Breeze. Discussion, please? Hearing none. Clerk Brinker, will you call the roll, please?
Killian?
Yes.
Breeze?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Eberth?
Yes.
Brinker, yes. Allen?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Motion carries. Item four, Board Information.
Motion to read and file.
Motion's been made by Treasurer Eberth to read and file.
Support.
Support by trustee Allen. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As have it, motion carries. Treasurer, disbursements from March the 6th, 2024. Item A, Payment of Utilities Due Prior to March the 18th Meeting in the amount of $85,168.57.
Motion to approve?
Support.
Motion's been made by trustee Chapman, supported by trustee Killian. Discussion, please?
Through the chair. Did you want to, um.
Will you approve all of them?
Improve A through D? We can do it all at once, and we'll, we'll do it with a roll call.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Concur, trustee Killian? Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Brinker, will you call the roll, please?
Brinker, yes. Allen?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Eberth?
Yes.
Breeze?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Motion carries. Item two, Disbursements for the meeting of March the 18th, 2024 in the amount of $989,369.59.
Motion to approve dispersment?
Support.
Motion's been made by trustee Chapman. Support by Clerk Brinker? Any discussion? Clerk Brinker, will you call the roll, please?
Allen?
Yes.
Breeze?
Yes.
Eberth?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Brinker, yes. Smith?
Yes. Motion carries. Item three, Board Information.
Motion to read and file.
Motion's been made by trustee Killian to read and file. Is there support for the motion?
Support.
Support by Clerk Brinker. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, Community Services Department. Board Information.
Read, motion to read and file?
Support.
Motion's been made by trustee Chapman to read and file, supported by trustee Breeze. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Recreation Department.
Through the chair.
Please.
We are going to add E1. That was the addition.
Correct. Brian, would you like to speak to that?
Certainly. So I, I appreciate the.
Okay, sorry.
Motion to approve?
Motion's been made by Treasurer Eberth. Is there support?
Support.
Support by trustee Breeze. Discussion, please?
I'm, I'm sorry, sir, is, that's on E1?
E1, yes.
Yeah.
That's the memo that county manager passed out.
I just didn't hear it mention that it was, what it's for, but that's no problem.
Through the chair. So this item, and again, I appreciate the board, um, allowing this to be added to the agenda. The, um, construction of pickleball courts at Brownstown has been, you know, a, a topic of discussion, uh, for a long time, and, and we need to get on top of this and, and get this moving forward. You know, this is becoming a much more popular sport than, I guess, I personally ever thought it would be. Um, it's now, you know, not just something that I, I think originally you typically saw it in, uh, maybe some retirement communities, but now it's becoming very popular, um, on college campuses, even becoming club sports in high schools, and, um, certainly something that is just exploding all over the country. So, um, what's before you is, uh, basically a, a construction management agreement, uh, with, um, MC Smith. And what they would do would be manage the full, uh, bid process, uh, development of, uh, of the specs and construction of this project. I know there was some concern, uh, that had been mentioned to me on the proposed timeline for this, so I wanted to note a couple of things. One, I think that the proposer is, uh, being extremely, uh, conservative with the timeline as to not overpromise. But two, and, and our recreation director, Teresa Graves, is here as well. I can speak to it. We had some, uh, additional conversations with her today, and, um, I believe there's, there could be some room for us to utilize, uh, maybe some of our own professional services to help, uh, speed this along. If, uh, one of the services they're proposing, uh, is not something that can happen quickly. So for example, the survey of the site. If there are particular surveyor they typically use, um, there's an extended period of time where they can't get out. We can certainly identify one and make that happen quicker. So there is going to be some ability for us, uh, internally to help move things along, to make sure we can get this project bid out and constructed. The other side of this is, uh, we've been discussing, you know, what do we do in the meantime? Uh, in the meantime, we still, we'll have to wait for this whole project to get in place, uh, for our residents to have a pickleball facility here at the township. So I'll, I'll put Teresa on the spot again a little bit here. Um, we've, uh, been discussing, uh, utilizing our current tennis courts, and I know a lot of communities do, I don't know what the real term is. I call it dual striping, but essentially, you can stripe the courts for use for multiple sports. And I know, uh, the Recreation Department has already, uh, purchased several, uh, portable pickleball nets that we have. I think we could quite easily, once the weather's cooperative for painting and, and doing lines, quite easily restripe the courts to allow for pickleball and set some, uh, times where those, uh, uh, that facility is, is flipped to pickleball, um, and have that available to our residents this year. So I know I just said that on brand-new microphones that, you know, are on the broadcast, but I think that's something we need to commit to. It's an important, uh, amenity that, again, is becoming more popular. Our residents want it, and, and I am confident that at the end of this whole process, we will have a phenomenal facility, um, probably better than any facility in the area. But in the meantime, we still need to have the ability for our residents to access this. It's something they want, and if there's something we can do, even on a temporary basis, for allow that, uh, we should, so that's something we'll be working on, uh, as well. So I wanted to make sure that was all within the discussion here.
And I do want to note, I apologize, too, this isn't just for pickleball courts. It's for that whole corner of the campus, which would include a multi-sport field, pavilion, uh, new parking, uh, to make it, uh, more accessible, uh, and connection into our existing sidewalk and trail that runs through there. Uh, obviously, the priority, as far as speed goes, is getting the courts up and running, uh, but that would be part of the full scope of the project.
To the chair.
Please, trustee. Mr. Peters, I know this is a DDA project, or DDA's gonna be taking care of it, but would it be possible for this to come to planning, just for us to look at? Not to make any decisions on, just to look at. We may have a few questions over there that might be helpful.
I think we could certainly have, uh, once the design's completed, we could send it over to, uh, planning as an informational item to take a look at.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Please.
Just related to this, not right on topic, but, um, somebody.
Just related to this, not right on topic, but somebody stopped me. It was asking about pickleball, which is obviously becoming big. And they asked if, if there was anything we could do with the high school that services Brownstown. They have so many tennis courts during the summertime where we would, you know, maybe do the striping and use some of those and provide it because it's off-season for them and there's lots of, I drive by there and I don't recall ever seeing every one of the courts being used. So I just throw that out that was brought up and I thought, well, I, I said, we're working on it. And they said, well, can you do something in interim? What you're suggesting is a good idea, but perhaps they're willing to work with us on doing that. And maybe they're already, I can't imagine that they're not already thinking about this.
And that's a good point. I know that Theresa and I just spoke on Friday and brought up that exact thing. I know she's been in pretty close contact with the Woodhaven Brownstown School District. We could reach out to Gibraltar School District. They're obviously all improving their facilities constantly. And yeah, the more ability to provide those types of amenities, I think the better. And, and as I'm sure you've seen, you know, residents now, after the renovation of the high school, have, they're allowing the public to come in from our community and utilize those really nice facilities. The pool, the track, all of that. I don't know why they'd limit it, you know, on the, on the tennis courts. And I'm sure they're looking at something with pickleball as well.
So what you're saying is Theresa stole my thunder. She's already got this covered.
Please come. Come on, yeah.
So I was just gonna say, I've been meeting with Woodhaven Brownstown Schools and we've been working on several things and pickleball is actually one of them that we're talking about. Expanding and so twenty twenty-four fall looks really good for us and Brownstown Woodhaven School District.
Okay, great.
Any other question?
Some of the communities have indoor facilities, correct?
Indoor pickleball, yes.
Yeah. Where, where at?
Flat Rock.
Flat Rock, Romulus.
Yeah, I think, isn't, didn't Flat Rock just build some new ones?
No, they're building, they're gonna build some new ones outside.
Building new ones outside, okay.
Now they have three available Monday through Friday.
Yeah, I know Dearborn had some, we had some in Dearborn.
Romulus, Dearborn Heights. And there's actually a private, Goseal has one at the racket club. Yeah, about by the airport. And I think there's one, one other indoor one in Wyandotte or.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's huge. It's huge. I would love to find an indoor space where we could do it as well. That would be fantastic. But we need to utilize some of the things that we already have too, so.
Please.
I just want to say, even though I don't play, I'm very, very excited on this. I know a lot of hard work that's been going into it. I know Chris is probably playing the football.
Yeah.
No.
The residents are going to be.
Very excited about this. We get a lot of questions about it. So thank you for your hard work. I've seen some of the preliminary designs and it's gonna be, Brownstown are going to be the best ones. And Theresa had some great ideas with the, the seating and the cupboard seating. And I'm very, very excited about this, so thank you for your, for your hard work that you've done on this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Item F. Public works. No reports submitted. Township manager update.
Good evening again. I guess only a couple of things I wanted to mention. First, um, last year, the board approved some road improvements in the community that was specific to the Cambridge Meadows and Cattail Creek subdivisions. We finished a couple of those roads in Cattail Creek before the weather turned on us. Based on the historically warm winter and spring we've had, frost laws are already off and we are anticipating resuming that project in early April. Of course, weather dependent. We have, I believe, one more road to finish in Cattail Creek and then that entire subdivision will have been replaced. And then the next portion of the project, which will be going out at the same time, is in Cambridge Meadows. Now Cambridge Meadows has a much larger area that needs to be covered. And, and, you know, I wish we had enough funding available to be able to do all of it. So what we're doing is trying to prioritize some of those areas in Cambridge Meadows. We just had a, it's almost finalized, our most recent Pacer study that our township engineer has put together, looking at road conditions. And specifically in Cambridge Meadows, we'll be looking at trying, there's some areas that are still in relatively good shape and some areas that have degraded very quickly. So what we're trying to do is kind of piecing together, connecting good road with good road and then focusing on some of the more problematic intersections in the subdivision. Try to stretch the funds as far as we can. There will certainly be more improvements needed in the future, but that will be starting much earlier than we ever have before. As long as the weather continues to cooperate, we're looking at early April having work being done on that. So that'll be happening in the next few weeks. And then we still have Dade County in the current year. Budget approved some funding for a township road initiative that they have yet to release the funds or the mechanism to apply for them or the amounts that we'd be entitled to and things like that. We've been in conversations with them as recently as last week, making sure they understand that that's a big priority for our community. So once they're able to put some provisions together, it's, it's possible. We could be looking at an additional road project this year, but that's all gonna be dependent on the county putting together a program that we can tap into. So that's where we are currently on some of our road work. And the other thing that I wanted to, I guess, formally mention, the new boardroom equipment that we've been talking about for quite some time has obviously been installed. We have new microphones that, you know, appear to be working. Sounds like I can hear everybody clearly. We have multiple cameras that can be adjusted for presentations at the podium, for anyone sitting at the dais, all customizable. This is, the broadcast will be obviously out on our Comcast and AT&amp;T public access channels, once everything's totally complete. And as well as we are now planning to stream on YouTube with our live meetings. So I know we're working through how all of that comes together, what we need to do to make that work well. This gives us a tremendous opportunity to expand that production value as far as we want to take it and as far as we have staff to be able to manage that. But it gives us a great opportunity to, for presentations, you see these giant screens that are up here. Presentations can, being made to the board can be directly connected with the TVs either remotely or by physical connection at the station over there. We'll be able to do a whole lot more than we have before. And, and the broadcast equipment, the broadcast platform that we're now using allows for all kinds of additional options for programming and scheduling. I mean, if we really wanted to just go crazy with this, we could start having local videos that get produced that we can program in there. Really, there's a lot of opportunity in the future. We're, we're looking at now, I think, in the past and our, our downtime when we weren't re-airing meetings, we just had basically what amounted to a PowerPoint slideshow of different things that are going on. We can tap into existing commercials that are put out by government entities such as Department of Health and Human Services and things like that that we can air, like actual, you know, I don't want to say advertisements because they're not selling anything, but just other content that can be programmed in as well as our own or as well as community groups around the community that we want to allow to have content available on there. So there's a lot of options. I'm sure we're just scratching the surface with how to use it all. I'm promising everybody will take baby steps to make sure everybody's comfortable as we move forward with the equipment. But nonetheless, I'm sure the content that's being viewed online and on our cable channels has a much better camera resolution right now and hopefully has very clear audio. So we'll, we'll keep working with it to get everything dialed in, but it's a long time coming and excited that we're able to finally get moving with it.
Thank you.
Through the chair. My wife texts me, she can see me much clearer now and she's not happy.
I, I will note that there's an additional piece of equipment we have to get directly from Comcast, which will allow a more high-definition signal to be broadcast. So we'll make sure we adjust those cameras right that way.
Please.
Mr. Peters, you mentioned roads and our collaboration, I'm gonna call it with your county. And my concern is maybe it's on by the wayside or maybe we forgot about it or maybe we just don't have time to get to it. Goodrich Highway. Are you familiar with Goodrich Highway?
I'm familiar.
And then there's another one on the north end over there. It's a Cambridge. But we don't have a speed limit there because I was on Goodrich the other day and went right past me and I thought I was tampered with. And, and I want to ask the chief to push something at that as well to get their attention before something happens tragically again that happened years ago. But are we still revisiting that, sir?
That being a county road, that would require a traffic study. It doesn't meet the criteria for residential area, so without a speed limit, it's kind of, what is, what is safe improvement? Kind of leaves it up in the open, so we can certainly try to commission a traffic study out there to. We, we don't have a lot of control over what that number's gonna be in the end.
I got that, but I'm just wondering if we're still at it? Are we still looking at it? Have we lost sight of it? Not to say that we have, but it's a concern when I'm out there as a senior now and they're driving the way they drive down Goodrich Highway. I was walking my puppy and it was kind of scared them and we were on the sidewalk, but the way they fly down that highway there, it's ugly.
Yeah, we will, we'll certainly reach out to the county again and see what, what we need to do to have them take a look at it.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Item H. Consideration for closed session.
Do you see the motion to go to closed session?
Aye. And if you could please state the reason also for the closed session?
I will.
For the pursuant contract negotiation?
Negotiations update for TPOAM Union. Motion's been made by trustee Chapman, supported by trustee Breeze, to go into closed session. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
To close the closed session?
Motion's been made by trustee Chapman, supported by trustee Bereas. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Closed session is closed.
Now we need a motion to approve the contract. Motion to the TPOAM is presented to approve that.
Motion's been made by trustee Chapman to approve the TPOAM contract as amended, then supported by trustee Bereas. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair, let's accept the motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion's been made by trustee Chapman. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Treasurer Eber. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Where'd that deep voice come from?
Did he pay extra for that mic?